We'll call meeting to order and rise for the legislative meetings.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Susie Roll, please.
Councilmember Groves?
Here.
Councilmember Chambers?
Here.
Councilmember Salzweil?
Here.
Councilmember Jankovic?
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer?
Here. Mike, you wanted to have the budget public hearing.
We just need to set the public hearing.
Just need to set the public hearing date for...
May 17.
May 17 for the next meeting, so we'll have that under new business later in the week. Any other discussion or changes? Motion to approve the agenda with that change?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Sue?
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankovic?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
All right, citizen discussion. Nobody? Okay. Full business COVID. Oh, there's nobody else soon with their hand up right soon?
No.
Okay. COVID-19 on Main Street?
Yeah, you can say it now.
We did?
Oh, we did? Sorry.
Sorry.
City Hall opened last week. And really, we really haven't had a lot of traffic in here, really, even with it being open. But we've been open. No relative issues. One thing I am in the process of doing is, under the federal law, we were required to provide 80 hours of COVID sick leave in case somebody had COVID exposure. That law expired on March 31st, so I'm actually in the process of preparing a memo for staff. We're going to end that practice probably June 1st. So that's the only, that's the only change. Really haven't had anything really come up since then, so.
All right, any questions for Mike from COVID? Showboat update?
Construction's still going along. I believe they're turning the boat this week. Been working on some stuff on the other side of the boat. They are... We should get the bathroom boats probably by the end of this week. I've talked to both Old Marine and Orion, they're pretty close to having things finished up. The question's going to be whether or not we can afford it. We have a showboat committee meeting on Wednesday. And we're talking, we're going through the insurance, we're going through the booking agreements and all that stuff. So Chris Chamberlain has also put the maintenance plan together for us for the boat. Once all the, once what brings out of there, we can have a plan that we can, that we can work off of and keep the, keep the boat maintained. That's all I have for that.
Jim, anything from the fundraiser?
The fundraising committee had their last meeting last Thursday, so we are officially done. That doesn't mean the donations are still not coming in or the red campaign is still not going. It's just that we have dissolved that. Now they are now working on the gala event for June 11th is their next big plan, so. And I think we're maybe $2,000, $4,000 sure in what we thought we could hit our goal, but we think we'll surpass that once we get two of those other last donations in, so. That's good.
Good. Cliff, any questions on the showboat?
How much tax dollars were spent thus far on the showboat?
Zero dollars.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Downtown traffic control?
I've asked Chris to provide you some information, Chief, first, about downtown traffic control on Main Street. So he did give you some stuff. Chris, I'm going to turn it over to you.
All right, I know this is a bit annoying, you have an issue with the traffic control downtown. I'm going to ask you to give me an update, what we're going to do. Just some information on the handle that I gave you. Eastern West Main Street, as you know, is a state highway, M21. The city and the county does not have any jurisdiction over setting speed limits or regulating that street unless it's done by a permitter or a study. Speed limits that are in place are established by the state commission through a traffic order. I provided you with an MSP booklet which talks about establishing speed limits. This booklet describes how the traffic study is conducted, how speed limits along selected roadways are established using the 85 percentile, and explains that they recommend speed limits by a survey team can be imposed in low concurrence of local units, of low concurrence. I mean, in other words, you say I want it to be this speed, but the state says, well, the 85 percentile is going to be this speed. They want concurrence from you guys, but they can set it any way they want because it's a state highway.
Didn't we fight a couple of years ago to keep it 25?
Yes.
As they come through with a study that said it should be 35 when we follow them?
It should be 30, yeah, it should be 30 in downtown. I mean, they do listen, apparently, and I wasn't involved in that, but I heard about the same thing. But if you look on page, I think it's page 11, there's a graph that explains the 85 percentile. What that means is, if you look down at the chart where it says speed number percentage and kilometer percentage, 84.9% of the cars are doing 50 miles an hour. So if they did a speed study, and what they probably did out here is that 85% of the cars are doing 35 miles an hour or somewhere in that area, that's why they wanted to set it at 35, okay? And there's a reason for that. If you read through the booklet, it explains that if cars are going at that percentile, there's less likely to be an accident because people aren't backing traffic up, causing other people to make lane changes when they shouldn't, they're tailgating and reckless driving. But that explains what that 85 percentile means. And then on page 18, under the heading recommendation, it explains that a survey team can come in and do this either by you guys asking them to do it, or they decide the residents, contact the state and they want it done. If they do it, they can come in and say, look, we're changing your speed limit to 35. I mean, they probably won't, they'll come here first and ask you guys first, but... But right now our speed limit is at 25. We got complaints of, what are we doing downtown? We did a quick survey just from our own records, and that's this chart right here. At the top there, you see we've had eight accidents between October and the middle of April. Two of those accidents were personal injury accidents that did not involve a vehicle. One person was struck by a car leaving Broadway by a dumbay Larkins. And one of the accidents or injuries was a bicyclist over here at Main and Washington slipped off his bike and hit the sidewalk. So on the eight accidents, one of those was a deer at James Street. This survey, or this, we looked at the street from Hudson down to James, okay? Which covers, you know, the merchant area of downtown. As far as tickets go and traffic stops, we wrote a total of 74 tickets during that same time period. And you can see that 10 of those tickets were for speeding, and 64 of those tickets were for other violations. A lot of plate violations, stop signs or stoplights or lane violations. And I just went through, I was hoping to look at all the, it was just too much work. But I did count up the number of traffic stops in April, it was 149 traffic stops. So that was our in-house, in-house survey of traffic, crashes, stops, citations. Speed data signs, we have one down here by Broadway and one down here by Washington Street. We attempted to download those signs this week and found that either by our error or error in the signs, there was no data to be found. We were attempting, we'll attempt to download these signs again on Friday. And this data will show us the peak hours of traffic, line and speeds to help us do a study for you guys. In-house, we'll do an in-house study in the area of Main Street near the Riverwalk because that is approximately halfway between, point between the speed sign on the west side of downtown and the speed sign on the east side. We're seeing if, you know, if they slow down for that first sign, it starts blinking at them. Once they get by, they speed back up again, okay? So we're going to attempt to do that with a handheld LiDAR, it's a laser radar kind of a thing. And we'll try to do it with a plain, a plain vehicle so people won't slow down on the side of a police car. So we'll get the honest, you know, honest speeds. We use this data to show us when we should, when we should conduct our directed patrol. But we're also going to do a public education announcing, you know, that we're going to be doing directed patrols for traffic violations in the downtown area through the city's Facebook page and the department's Facebook page and through a press release to Lowell Ledger, Lowell First Law. I'll be talking to Ari and tomorrow, so. Once we do all this, then we'll, once we get all these, look at all the data, find out when is, when is it most efficient for us to be down there, down in downtown area running traffic, then we'll start conducting directed patrol. What that means is, we're going to designate a time where our officer will sit there, and all he does, or they do, will be stopping cars for violations, any violation, okay? Just so that we're seeing downtown. We're not going to announce when we're going to be down there. We're not going to give them any number, like if you're doing 27, 29, 32, that's when we're going to stop you. You're going to set, that's when you stop them, and that's when you take them, okay? Some recommendations I came up with to consider. Purchase additional speed signs that we can put down here in this downtown area like you have at the other ends of the main street, which remind the drivers as they come through town that, hey, you're speeding up, you're going to need to slow down, but you'll need to get a state permit to do that. Or move the existing signs you already have, move them closer into the merchant area to slow them down before they get to the crosswalk at M21 or get in front of City Hall here. Because right now, you've got one two blocks away, and it's real easy. Especially with not a lot of traffic to speed back up as you can get into this area downtown. Improve the downtown main street with bump outs or other devices, narrow the street to naturally slow traffic. I worked here before they had curbs and lines on Bowles Road, and I found that was a racetrack before they put the curbs up. When they put the curbs up and lined the street, it naturally slowed the traffic down because it gave the appearance that the lanes were narrower. So if any way you can figure out how to make the lanes look narrower down here, it'll slow people down. Requested install a speed reduced ahead sign prior to the 25 mile an hour downtown, downtown zone. I think Mike has done that. In fact, it was supposed to be, I guess, part of the last speed study, but we never got it.
Yeah, so when we, when we, when they changed the speeds from over by James from 40 miles, from 45 miles an hour, then goes to 25 miles an hour at Jefferson there, or Washington. They were supposed to give us a reduced speed only sign, which was 15, once it goes 15 miles an hour, they're supposed to put that sign up. They told us they were going to do that, and then when we inquired, they played dumb and said, no, you don't, you don't get that sign. You don't need that sign. So we didn't get the sign.
But we have to ask them permission if we make our own.
We can't, yeah, we can't put it up, no.
The last two recommendations are, we can pay, we can call somebody and pay them out of a separate fund to do traffic control. I don't know how that would be done, but that's an option. Or we could park an unmanned police cruiser in the downtown area, but that would get figured out pretty quick, you know, licensed to dummy car. Other considerations, you've got to remember that your police department only has one officer on most of the time and pretty much all the time during the peak daylight hours. So we may not be able, available to conduct directed patrol at established times due to other calls for service. And as a police department, we have to consider the whole city, not just a three block area of downtown. So that's our, that's our plan. We're going to start this next week and hopefully have a Carl, everybody that'll think after that, and then see what happens.
Chris, do those signs require power also?
The speed signs?
Yeah, because maybe that's why they're on the post, they are?
Yes.
Yeah.
And they, they do record both directions from the sign. They tell you, they give you all kinds of data, speed, time of day, that kind of thing, so. Scott knows more about how that works. He's, he's the tech guy.
I think the signs were about 25 hundred, 28 hundred?
About 25 hundred. So I've emailed the state, figure out what we need to do if we get those second signs. My concern, my note before, to get the signs that we had before, we had to have a speed study. My concern is they might want another speed study. That could be a problem. We may not want to move forward if that's the case.
Does the city still have the portable unit?
We do, but it doesn't, it's a little old, that thing is old, it's worn out.
Could we utilize our officer that patrols at night for the Southwood district to, when they're sitting and doing maybe?
We could, but that's something, I guess we have to, they're paid by the DDA, so it's going to be their, what they want more than what we want, so.
Can we look into that?
We can. Also, even with the portable sign, we could put it on if we wanted to. We tried that before and we got caught.
Yeah, you can't do that.
We could even put, have a nice day or thank you.
Yeah, you can't do that.
Look in the wall.
Yeah. Slow down. What about 35 mile an hour activated spike straps?
I can look into that.
Scott will give us a good answer. Any other questions for Chief? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's drop into new business, land use ordinance for Michael.
I'm going to turn this over to Susie, because Susie's the one who handles this.
At this meeting of March 8, 2021, the planning commission reviewed a request from Chris Nelson for a towing, vehicle towing service at 211 South Washington Street. Subject to a zoning ordinance text amendment, also considered at this meeting, vehicle towing service would be permitted in the light industrial district only with special man use. At that meeting, the planning commission unanimously recommended that the Lowell City Council approve ordinance 21-03.
Can you guys talk to all the neighbors and stuff and address the lighting and the hours and everything? This has been a long process. Okay. Any questions for Susie or Marty on the text amendment ordinance? Motion to approve?
Make a motion that we approve ordinance 21-03.
Not support?
Any other discussion? Sue?
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Detective Bureau Vehicle, Mike?
The current vehicle in use for the police detective is a retired patrol vehicle. This unit is in very poor condition to the point it appears we are chasing good money after bad as the costs for the repairs are becoming more than the value of the vehicle. Our normal practice is to have the retired patrol vehicle be passed down to the detective bureau. However, the vehicle we are passing down in this instance is going to be in a situation whereby we are chasing good money after bad as well. The vehicle is already in rough shape for police use, and the department anticipates there will, there will not be much better than what we currently have for the detective vehicle. As you know, Detective Lauren performs salvage inspections for One Way Auto. He has held discussions with them regarding finding a decent used vehicle to serve as a detective car. One Way came across a 2015 GMC Acadia. I'm told that the vehicle is in relatively good shape, relatively low miles, I believe about 80,000 miles, and the blue book value of the Acadia is around $22,000. One Way Auto is looking to trade the Acadia for the Jeep, for the city's 2011 Chevrolet Palat, which is the current detective vehicle, and our former dirt truck, a 2001 GMC Sonoma. One Way claims, One Way claims trade, trade in for these two vehicles value $6,000. One Way will donate an additional $6,000 towards the vehicle, and the remaining $10,000 will come from the city. The police department would like to use salvage money. There is over $10,000 in this account, and would result in no general fund dollars being utilized. The police department would like to use the Acadia as it does, not look like a police unit for daily use. Additionally, it could be used to transfer large amounts of evidence from crime scenes to the police station for follow-up investigation and storage. I should mention the detective does not take this vehicle home with him. Also, the vehicle is only used during working hours or if called in for a crime scene. I'm recommending that the Lowell City Council allow the Lowell Police Department to trade in, trade the 2011 Palat and the 2001 Sonoma to One Way Auto and utilize $10,000 from the salvage fund to purchase the 2015 Acadia for the detective use.
That's a pretty good deal.
Chris, you have an idea?
It will also be, one thing that we, we'll use it for sending guys to training. I guess it's a six-seater, so we will definitely use it for going to the range because we just go through over here to Triton. So instead of taking three cruisers out there, we'll tell everybody we'll take one car. So it'll be used for that also.
Any other questions for Mike or Chris? Motion to approve that purchase?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Sue?
Councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Michael Burns Memorial Day events.
If you recall from last year, the Memorial Day events were modified to accommodate the COVID-19 pandemic. I received a request from Derek Ritzelmann at the American Legion to be allowed to have the same event as they did last year. If you recall, they had a small presentation at Oakwood Cemetery to honor fallen soldiers from the Lowell area. They all, they followed all social distancing guidelines and intend on doing so this year. They do not plan to have a parade this year due to the pandemic. I do not have any issues with this event in the manner they described it. I'm recommending the Lowell City Council allow the veterans of foreign wars and American Legion to hold their presentation at Oakwood Cemetery.
Derek did a good job last year, I thought. Because he didn't have a lot of time to deal with it because it was a relatively new pandemic. I'll make that motion.
And I'll support.
Any other questions or discussion? Sue?
Councilmember Jankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Council, Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
All right, garden sale, Marty, is that yours?
Yeah, so Tiny Nord, again, this year is going to hold her, she wants to be an annual garden sale. I believe it's May 22nd. Again, she would like to close the road down again. Did Dr. Jeff Altop, they are opening. I think they open today. Jeff says as long as we can keep her where she was last year, he has no issue, no problem. They would like one parking spot behind the stores where that green space is. They have an old travel trailer that they're going to bring in, and she sells her stuff out of that, so. Nobody had an issue with any of it. And I request that if we approve this, can we please get her a letter? Because remember last year, the police had no idea, so it's posted, and we don't, we have no problem.
Yep, we will notify police and fire this year.
Barry, any concerns from Langfauer? May 11?
May 21.
May 21.
I have one note.
Yes?
Last year we gave the permission, and I actually had to go to the post office, and there was something I didn't see in relation to a plant sale. There was a political, they were signing petitions.
Oh, yeah.
And I would, if we're going to do a letter of approval, let's keep it to selling plants. Everybody's got the right to collect petitions, but not when we close down the street for a plant sale.
Barry?
All right, I want to weigh in with the city attorney on that because there might be a First Amendment issue on that. Jessica, can you, is that, is that allowable? She's muted.
Okay, sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so I would need to know a little bit more about that situation, but it certainly does invoke certain free speech rights, and we would need to do that analysis. There's a lot of case law right now that protects free speech, and so that's something that we would need to look at.
I withdraw the statement. What are we going to do? Have an analysis done and look at this? So I already brought it up.
I don't think you're wrong. I think if we're going to put city logos on stuff, it should be not partisan and not take the side, but I agree with you. Any other?
I don't want to hinder the sale while we do the study, is what I'm saying.
Yes.
But I will, I will pass that information on to... Please, you have to tell him this, though.
Thanks.
I have a motion to approve the road closure for the garden sale.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Sue?
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankovic?
Yes.
All right, lay down whatever number one. Budget hearing?
Yep, we just need to set the public hearing for the budget, for the budget hearing for Monday, May 17th at the city council meeting.
Monday, May 17th at 7:00 p.m. Public hearing and notices and everything. Good?
Good.
Cliff, board and commission reports.
I have nothing new, sir.
Jim?
I have nothing.
Leah?
I have nothing about anything as well.
Marty?
Oh, I don't want to break. I know I'll come up.
Yeah.
The fire authority met with Lou Bender before the council did, 50% attendance, as expected. So once the fire authority goes over Lou Bender notes that Jessica and I were emailed out, breaking back here, let you know what went on. DDA, oh, DDA got rescheduled, where we going? All right, Michael, city managers report.
Today we had a pre-construction meeting for Forement. They anticipate, their tentative date to start the project is June 7th. They're doing, CNL, CNL Trucking is the contractor, they're doing Foreproc. They're doing, currently they're doing the Alden Nash project, they're doing this project, and they've also been awarded the Jane Ellen project, and I believe they also bid on Amity. So trying to coordinate all their different, different projects. So they're looking at starting that one on June, on June 7th. Did they say 35 days for completion?
Yes.
So they're saying...
35 calendar days.
35 calendar days.
Well, that's not bad.
No, that's pretty, pretty quick. The Jane Ellen project, that is, that is right now scheduled to be planned sometime after July 1st. I know we're going to be setting up a pre-construction meeting with them relatively soon. The bids for Amity will be open tomorrow. You should have something at your next council meeting for Amity. I'm currently in the process of putting a seven-year road plan together. Basically, I'm doing a financial analysis of our local, local major street funds, and I'm trying to go through different areas of the city, make sure I'm kind of hitting all the areas roughly evenly and trying to figure out how many streets we can do with the money we have. So I hope to bring that to you in the near future. Dan has already started the sidewalk inspections. I'm sure he is, he'll have, once he gives more information as to what they are, he'll come back to you and explain your plan. Darren Dopery, Dopery is our new DPW section. He started today. Also, Eileen DeRee started today in the police department. And one last thing I want you to talk to you about is the USDA rural development financing. And Jessica, I'm going to have her update your numbers until it's going up.
Sure, okay, so just a little update in terms of what we've been looking at since we last discussed this at the last meeting. Just a reminder, we're looking at $3 million for water, 4.5 for sewer, and about two for capital improvement bonds. And so we've had to do some due diligence in trying to determine how to best structure this for the city so that you get the very best deal. There are a lot of moving parts here. Again, there's an MDOT grant, which Mike has described several times to you, and we're trying to make it all coordinate with rural development loan, and also the capital improvement portion is probably going to have to go out on the open market. So a couple of things that we've looked at since the last meeting is whether rural development would require prevailing wage. They would not. Now, there are some prevailing wage requirements involved with the MDOT portion, but rural development would not trigger that for their portion. We also have to have a historical preservation report done, SHPO report that's required by rural development. And so that's something that we're still analyzing to see the extent to which that might contribute to the cost as well. And we're also reviewing the agreements with the township relating to the users and still analyzing the rate analysis to determine what impact, if any, there might be on users. So again, these all go to the financial aspect of these funds and how to structure it in the most efficient way possible for the city because we're going to try to do all of this at once. So it's for that reason that we still don't have those notices of intent for you, but a few pieces keep moving, and so as soon as they start moving, we can, we can get those published. Any questions?
No?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jessica.
Thank you.
All right, appointment?
Mike, I have a question for Dan, and I'll let you start at the sidewalks. In the past, there's been some white markers, orange markers, yellow markers indicating sidewalk repairs. Are you currently already accessing those, that was that, since you've already done some?
No, not yet. I made the list of all, and then when we're ready to go, then I'll mark them and we'll send notices at that time. I'm afraid if I go out there and mark them now, the photo ring off the hook, so what's going on?
We'll get calls too, to say, what is that?
So before we do, before that gets done, you'll all know about it.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right, appointments, we have an application from Leah for the vacant Arbor, Arbor Board spot. Does anybody not want her on the Arbor Board?
We all have.
She can take Melissa's spot on the Arbor Board. Still another vacancy on that. I had to leave Historic District because my schedule changed and I'm not available Tuesdays. So there's a vacancy on that, that's a citizen's spot as well. And then we're gonna have to get you and I later this week on that.
What time does the city meet?
Uh, 6:00.
6:00 on Tuesdays.
Because as a private citizen, I can, I can do it right.
Yeah. Cliff's on that board, though, you know that, right?
I'll take that.
Council comments, Leah?
I was just gonna say that there's lots of open seats on boards, so come join us if you wanna be involved with the city.
Marty?
I enjoyed the Lou Bender dinner day. I thoroughly enjoyed the coffee, small group, what we got, donuts, thank you, Seid. And good job on the budget, Mike, you played really well. But I can't believe two times in a row our watch has got screwed up.
Really, I'm the best?
Yeah.
I got mine. Cliff?
I would like to express my appreciation for the budget because I'm not a number cruncher guy, but it seems I could digest it. Sue and Sue and Mike did a great job, the chief made his debut. And while Dan knows I think he does a great job.
Thank you.
Yeah. I think we, everybody does a good job of preparing us for stuff. I mean, there are things that are gonna happen that we don't know about, but other than that...
These guys are very helpful, they're in some good...
Good. All right.
What about Dan?
We really are stacked with talent around here at almost every level of the city, so it's really nice to see that kids getting happy and nice publicly. Because we talk about it all the time, how lucky we are to have Chris and Dan and Mike and Sue and Sue and Lori and everybody else, but sometimes you gotta say it in a public way. Because there's a lot of stuff that goes on around here that doesn't affect the level of service that no one will ever know about if we're not the ones out there championing the work that's getting done down here. So I'm grateful for everyone. I wish Mike would've worn a different mask, but what can you do? Jim?
I would make a motion to adjourn at 7:30 tomorrow.
I'll support.
Motion in a second, and everybody's here in person, so all those in favor signify by saying no.
Aye.
Opposed, adjourn.